I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Pledge of Allegiance?
Hail to the United States of America, to the Constitution, to the Constitution, to the Constitution, to the Constitution, to the Constitution.
Mr. Reba Rollcall?
Mr. Benomo?
Here.
Mr. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Fume? Mrs. Kay? Mr. John?
Present.
Mr. Mahalik?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Garcella?
Here.
And Mr. Zola?
Here.
Announcement of executive sessions held as follows, May 17th, 2017, to discuss the 2017-18 budget staffing and employee negotiations. May 24th, employee negotiations. Dr. Butler, announcements and recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. I'd like to welcome to the podium, Mr. Denotti. We have several recognitions this evening, and this is a special time of year as many of our activities and clubs and different organizations come to a close of their school year. So we're certainly pleased to offer students recognition this evening. Mr. Denotti?
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Tonight, on behalf of the Hazelton Area School District Board of Education, I have the privilege of introducing and recognizing a large group of students for their academic achievements. Therefore, I ask that you please be patient. As I announce your names, students, please come up to the podium. The first group of students competed at the Luzern Intermediate Computer Fair held in Kingston, PA. Those receiving first place in graphic arts for 2017 are Brianna Kennedy, Emily Trelle, and Matthew Kassadis. The next set of--
Sorry, Mom wants to take her picture. Go ahead.
The next set of students are for first place, animation 2017. They are Amari Fernandez and Eddie Linker. And the next group, first place logo design 2017. They are James Fangjoy, Evan Matias, and Sean J. Suarez. The next group of young men competed at the WVIA Educational Film Festival and were awarded first place 2017 video animation. They are Mosiah Bennett, Kevin Harinko, Brian Peña, and Steven Santana. If you're here, please come up. Following students competed in the PA State Liquor Control Board poster contest. These students were awarded first place 2017 in the alcohol awareness poster contest. Their poster will be placed on a calendar that will be distributed throughout PA. The recipients were Emily Trelle and Sidney Leskowicz. Next, the next group of students received a first place in the Box of Light WVIA Educational Video Festival for grades two through four, and they are Daniel Griffith, Joshua Ryan, Caleb Scuba, and Franklin Ritz. If you would please come forward. Okay, gentlemen, congratulations. The next group of students were awarded first place in the State of PA East Cyber Missions Contest. That is a science and mathematics contest. They received a $1,000 savings bond. Those recipients are Grant Russo, Madeline Ashton, Sadie Cloud, and Kurt Gammert. Okay, thank you. Next group of students, first place web design at the PA Middle School Computer Fair Regional Contest. They are Kitrick Danzeisen and Just Karen Singh. Okay, next, we would like to recognize John Gordon for placing fifth in the second round of MathCon 2017. That is a nationwide competition. John Gordon, as well as Dario Demoto, Colin Grabosch, and Samantha Zeremba traveled to Chicago and participated in this invitational second round challenge. The first round online math challenge was given to 50,000 students in 40 states. For the second round only, 570 students were invited to compete at the University of Illinois in Chicago on April 22nd, 2017. To qualify for the second round, each of the following students earned a 99% tile on the first round of the challenge. Invitations for the second round were given based on the student's score and time of completion. Those students are Dario Demoto, John Gordon, Colin Grabosch, Samantha Zeremba, Brian Bartle, and Ben Palfy. The next group of students to be recognized. Congratulations to the staff of the school newspaper Cougar Chit Chat for winning the Spotlight Award for Overall Outstanding Achievement in the Changing State of Journalism at the Wilkes University Bigler Journalism Conference held last Friday. One school district's newspaper receives this honor based on the quality of submissions and evolving issues facing journalists today. In addition to this award, senior Dylan Laurie won first place for his achievement in the sports reporting for the article titled, "Where Are the Cougar Crazies?" The students involved are as follows. Ms. Samantha Kaba, Mr. Josh Capriati, Ms. Nancy Cruz, Ms. Dominique Dispirito, Ms. Faith Elko, Raoul Geronimo, Blake Gibson, Madison Hawn, Brittany Heffelfinger, Alexandria Hudok, Anastasia Crone, Mark Kissinweather, Dylan Laurie, Nathan McKeon, Jessica Merman, Frank Muzeline, Edney Santos, Gia Sloan, Justin Vargas, Daniel Werkeiser, and Andrew Whitesall. Ladies and gentlemen, they are the Cougar Chit Chat Newspaper Staff. The final student that we will recognize tonight is Ms. McKenzie Joe Jones. Ms. Jones is graduating from the Hazelton Area School District, the class of 2017. While at the Hazelton Area School District, she has been involved with the Spirit Club, Executive Council, marching band, and basketball. She has also been a member of the National Honor Society, as well as the Spanish Honor Society. Ms. Jones plans to enter the nursing field and has been accepted into Wilkes University Nursing Program. She is being recognized tonight for being the recipient of a nursing scholarship through the Luzern Intermediate Unit Number 18. She was recognized last night up in Kingston, PA at the intermediate unit, but that is Ms. McKenzie Joe Jones. And finally, we would like to recognize the advisors or the mentors for these students as they either go through these clubs or these competitions. Tonight, we have Ms. Tembasco, Ms. Sharp, is Ms. Matt Sago here? If you would please stand. Picture. Will he get him a-- Get him a picture. He left too early. Oh, you want to get me in the picture? Come on.
Mr. Denotti, we may have just started a new tradition. We do have one more recognition this evening. I'd like to invite Ms. Redwinski, Terry Redwinski, if you come down. All of you know it's impossible to run a school system without good support. People serving in our schools and assisting our professionals, and we have a very fine group of secretaries, paraprofessionals, and various different individuals who support our schools each and every day, doing some very, very fine work. And Ms. Redwinski is here tonight to publicly share a celebration with the board in that regard. Terry?
Thank you. On May 12th, at the Pennsylvania State Education Association House of Delegates, the Hazelton Area Education Support Professionals were awarded the Intergroup Relations Community Service Outreach Projects Award for outstanding commitment and dedication to intergroup relations in Pennsylvania schools. Each year, the committee recognizes one local association that exemplifies community service. The HAESP, which are the parists, secretaries, bilingual liaisons, and food service workers of our district, were recognized for projects of purchasing hundreds of hats and gloves for your students, contributing to Toys for Tots, Bears for Ill Children, purchasing hundreds of blankets that were sent to a field hospital overseas to be used when transporting wounded soldiers from hospital to hospital, so that they could feel the warmth and caring coming from home. This year, at the celebrating ESP dinner, ESP members donated a few hundred pairs of socks, blankets, and over $1,000 in cash for meals to the less fortunate at our local homeless shelter. We are already working on our project for next year. Your support staff really are the unsung heroes of public education. Thank you.
Before we start with public comment, we are removing item-- as noted on the agenda, we are removing item 74 and also removing item 75 from the agenda. Mr. Benomo, public comment.
Nancy Wash-- Is it Wasco or Nashco? Nashco, sorry.
Hi, my name's Nancy Nashco. I'm from Hazelton, and I'd like to make some comments about eliminating the German programs. I am a German teacher at the high school, as well as the Hazelton Area Academy of the Sciences, and I do realize the school district is having financial problems, and changes do need to be made. But removing an entire language choice, is that the best and most efficient way to go? Have all other options been carefully examined throughout the district? In this day and age, and in a school our size, several language choices should be provided for our students. I attended the former Hazelton Area-- or the Hazelton High School, and at that time, it was a much smaller school, and we had six language choices at the time. As a German teacher in the district for the past 13 and a half years, I've been involved in all the language programs, the high school, the middle school, and the elementary schools, and I went into quite a few of the schools. The language program has opened up our students' minds culturally, geographically, and has given them an understanding of communicating in another language in all the schools. There are freshmen, sophomores, and juniors that are enrolled in my German 1 classes, and they need that second and third level for a college requirement at both the STEM and the high school. Our students chose German for a variety of reasons. They are planning to major in businesses and the sciences, and it is the recommended language for their careers. Many colleges require three consecutive years of a language. We currently have between 150 to 200 students in our German program, and that have been scheduling German for next year. They're all being displaced. When are they going to be placed? Where are they going to go? What are they supposed to do? They're going to be needing another teacher for the displaced students, something else, and how is that really saving anything? Are there any other classes smaller than the German program that can be considered? If this elimination is to happen, could it be held off for at least one year so that the current students in German 1 can complete their second level in the fall for their minimum requirement for college? They need a minimum of two languages, two levels of a language. Please consider tabling the decision and take the time for a little more planning and discussion before the final decision is made. And a plan for all those students have been chosen, who have chosen and scheduled German and put it in place. I'm speaking for my students. They chose it because they wanted it, and it's something they need, and I'm very disappointed that it's being pulled, and they are also. Thank you very much.
Ms. Nashco? I'm sorry, just so you're aware, I have spoken-- and this is for the board's information as well, of course. I've spoken with Mr. Patron. We do have a plan to complete the students who are trying to get at least two consecutive years, and that plan is in place. I think I perhaps did not allude to that when I spoke to you the other night, but we do not want to leave students hanging.
That's what I was really concerned about, because the way it said here, 1 and 2 were going to be eliminated, and all my 1s, and we're looking at like 50 kids. That's a lot of kids that are going to end up lost.
Well, please know that every effort will be made to help the students complete in as much as we can, given our constraints. I just wanted to make--
I understand. Scheduling in this district is no easy feat. I do understand that. So I just wanted to speak for them, because I am concerned about them. Okay, thank you.
Dylan Poncarey.
Good evening, school board and everyone here tonight. I'm Dylan Poncarey from the Hazelton Area High School. Tonight, the board is going to recommend the elimination of German 1 and German 2 from the language program at the high school. Last year, when I did my scheduling for ninth grade, I selected German because my family is German. I'm doing very well in this language and was hoping to be accepted into the German National Honor Society after completion of German 3, like many other students here. I have one of the best teachers I have ever met. She is very devoted, and she helps us a lot. She's a very great teacher. Many of us have taken German 1 and are now upset and angered because we are really starting to learn this language and would like to move on to the next level, but if we can't, we'd have to start over with French 1 or Spanish 1, which is not fair to us, the students. The German language is used a lot after high school in majoring engineering or democratic-- or diplomatic services, which I would like to major in. I myself know, and a few students, who are in college now and use German. If German is cut, we will be left either to take Spanish or French. Many of my friends that I go to school with schedule German 1 for next year because they either did not like Spanish, or French, or had difficulty with it, and there's a lot of students who have not taken a language yet, so our population will rise. I know our school district is having a lot of budget issues, but please take some time to think about not eliminating German. Thank you.
Kyle?
Good evening. I'm Kyle Prokopick, a junior from Hazelton Area Academy of Sciences. I'm in my third year of German. My teacher is Frau Nashco. She's a very wonderful teacher. She has taught me a lot throughout my past three years of German and hopefully my fourth. In my first year, I got an overall of 95, my second year a 93, and my third a 96. My future years of schooling, I like to use German in my career field, which is computer engineering, computer sciences. I use that such as traveling to European countries or working with German companies. Many years ago, the district had six languages at one point. If they cut German, then it'll only be two, which is French and Spanish. Wow, what a difference. The reason I took German is because it's in my heritage, and many people I know speak it. I am a current member of the German Honor Society, and it's a great honor. Thank you for my time. I hope you guys could maybe take some time until thinking about it, and hopefully just keep it for next year. Thank you.
Teresa Redwinski?
Teresa Redwinski, I'm speaking on behalf of the educational support staff. On item number 87, I see that you're looking to approve a warehouse coordinator position as nonclassified. That can't be nonclassified. Both coordinators and warehouse personnel belong to the HAESP A-Union. There are jobs.
This will be a supervisory position?
Then it can't be called a coordinator.
Evaluating the warehouse personnel. We do have coordinators that are union, and we have coordinators that are non-union.
And maybe we need to do unit clarification. Can't be called a coordinator. Coordinators are ours.
We have current coordinators that are nonclassified.
Okay, then we can ask for a unit clarification. Cost the district more money.
Oh, yeah, that's all.
Okay, no problem. Please, go right ahead.
On item 72, about eliminating German. My name is Antonio from Hazelton. I'm looking at this newspaper here. It's a Spanish newspaper, and the school district is spending about $300 a month on one page of this paper. We have interpreters. We have Spanish interpreters in the school district. We have many employees who speak Spanish. I don't think we need this page. It's about at least $3,000 a year. The school district is giving this guy for this page. I think it's a waste. I think it's a waste. 99% of the Spanish speakers at the high school also speak English. And my grandchildren speak English and Spanish. And many parents speak English, Spanish, and English. This is a waste. Get rid of this and save $3,000 every year, please.
My name is Robert Childs. I'm from Hazel Township. I had two items on the agenda that I'd like to address. Number one, I'm hoping you'll clarify the difference between number two, recommend the board approve partnership, and item number 63 on my-- now, this is a preliminary item that I have here. What is the difference between the employees being employed by this district and those being run through the-- those being run through the Career Link Wilkes-Barre program? Second thing I needed to ask you to consider is item number 49 on mine is recommend authorize representatives of the Hazelton Area School District to attend June state auction. I stood next to a gentleman at the polls last Tuesday, and this gentleman clearly knew the Career Center well from having been employed there, and indicated that he was aware of Mr. Kress offering free of charge the vehicles that are necessary for this, for the Career Center to do the work that needs to be done here. If he's offering free of charge, why are we paying people to go to an auction and then buy-- I'm not giving you names, Mr. Zola. That's not fair for me to do that in front of the public. I can talk to you later about it privately, but I can-- he was fairly clear that we're spending $20,000 a year for maybe as many as three automobiles that we're actually could get free of charge and not send people to auctions. Thank you. Thank you.
We need to approve the board meeting minutes. Regular board meeting, April twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor of approving the board meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Treasuries report for April two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Questions? All in favor of supporting treasurer's report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Dr. Butler?
Curriculum and instruction, Career Center approved items one through sixteen with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. Number nine, if you would just recommend board approve the following to meet here in summer for purposes of programs, curriculum development, expanding arts and humanities. The program's about two years old. It started as a pilot program, it's about two years old. What, what parts of it are we redoing the curriculum on?
Good question, Mr. Zola. As we're going into our third year with this program, we have been writing curriculum annually to move the program into a four-year program, Mr. Zola. So this accounts for the faculty members that are in the Arts and Humanities program to meet and discuss integrated curriculum that will be used in the third year of the program as we move into the seventeen, eighteen school year.
I have a comment. So, once again, we're going to pay thirty-one dollars an hour for eighteen hours times fifteen teachers, which is now, which is going to come out to about eight thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. That's not where the cost is going to be. The cost is going to be, that's going to increase our PISers, which is the biggest problem trying to balance this budget, and the social security. So therefore, we have no problem cutting German for these kids, but it's okay to do stuff like this. That's why I cannot support this, because we always go to cut things for the kids first, and the German thing will be the kindergarten debacle all over again.
Dr. Butler, couldn't this be done on in-service with no charge cost to the district?
It could, Mr. John. We, as in the case of our virtual program, we run into competing interests on ACT eighty days, whether it be training, mandatory state training, our own training, other activities that we have scheduled for our teachers. The answer is yes, it could be done, but it would run into competition with other activities that we have scheduled for our staff with our ACT eighty days.
Well, then I think you have to prioritize whichever is most important. That's what we do. That's my opinion for what it's worth. I know it's not worth much, but that's my opinion.
I agree that we have to start prioritizing, because we don't have the money for this. We just don't. We all know it, and we just keep hiding our head in the sand. But there's no way that I'm going to vote for people to get thirty-one dollars an hour at a cost of probably going to be close to ten thousand dollars by the time we're done, because we never stick to the amount of hours. And then the PISers will increase, and the social security will increase, and we're going to cut German for kids. We always cut for the students, always.
I just have one question. I'm sorry that led into that, but number six, I'm just not familiar with what this is.
Mr. Zola, this is the organization that I attended a conference this year in Arizona free of, free of charge for the first year. During the conference, as I shared in part with the board, there were vendors there, there were speakers there. I found the conference extremely valuable. The information that will come to the district through District Administrative Leadership Institute will benefit the district in not only the ways that are listed here, but others in terms of professional development, for through literature, resources, and other benefits that would come with the membership that will help our, our district grow. My feeling is the cost is minimal for the, for the benefit that we get, and one district leader is included in, again, attendance and not only membership, but going to one conference per year for that amount. So not only the conference, but it's materials and resources that I think are valuable.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Reba, roll call.
Numbers one through sixteen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No on six and nine.
No on nine and fourteen?
No on six and nine.
I'm a no on nine.
No on nine.
No on six and nine?
No on nine.
I'm going to call a roll call.
Yeah, I would do that.
That would be better. Mr. Benomo, your no votes. Nine and fourteen. Mr. Chapman?
Yes on everyone except number nine.
Mr. Fiume?
No on nine.
Mrs. Kay?
No on six and nine.
Mr. John?
No on six and nine.
Mr. Mahalik?
Yes.
Mrs. Scarsella?
No on nine.
Mr. Zola?
Six and nine, though.
And Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
I believe nine did not pass. I'm arrested.
Special education, ESL and alternative education, approved items seventeen through twenty.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba, roll call.
Numbers seventeen through twenty-four, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Nutrition approved items twenty-five through twenty-eight with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers twenty-five through twenty-eight, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Security approved items twenty-nine through thirty with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers twenty-nine and thirty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Technology items thirty-one through thirty-three with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers thirty-one through thirty-three, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No on thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three.
Yes, I'm a no on those three also.
No on thirty-two.
Any other no votes? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Student activities athletics next to curricular, number thirty-four, recommend board accept the resignation of the following athletic coaches.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Number thirty-four, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Facility?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we retain Sugarloaf Golf Course as a place that our golf team can play for this upcoming year, and I'd like to add Valley Country Club at a cost of fifteen hundred dollars a year.
This cost is in addition, in addition to what we're paying for Sugarloaf? Valley Country Club?
Yes, yes. Fifteen hundred dollars. Fifteen hundred dollars additional. There's eleven hundred dollars left in the existing budget for this year, so realistically, we're paying like four hundred bucks, I think. The thing is, we've doubled the size of the team. We've gone from ten players to, I believe, twenty-three players. I think we have an assistant coach, we have a head coach, we have a statistician. In order to get twenty-two players to practice as often as Mr. Barrettski wants to practice, it would be impossible. There's not enough time in the day. This way, with two different courses, they're able to take a JV team to Sugarloaf for the country club, and then take the varsity team, and they could flip-flop however they see it fit. I don't know if there's any other questions that one may have on it.
Second, I'll second.
I have a question on it. Mr. Barletta, in our, in our meetings, committee meetings, was going to do some background work at some prices from all the golf courses? Are you recommending this?
No, I'm not, because this was not discussed at the committee meeting. I was planning on presenting this at the next committee meeting for June.
Thank you.
The situation is that I believe golf season starts, I don't know if it's, if it's next week or in two weeks. Again, here we go, looking to do something good for the kids, and it looks like we may not have the support to do so. But I believe there's a motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah, we have, we have to have public comment, since this was, this was introduced and it wasn't on the agenda. Is there any public comment on this?
Could you repeat that for us? I'm having a hard time hearing Mr. Benomo.
The motion?
The motion.
The motion was to retain Sugarloaf Golf Course as one of the golf courses that the Hazelton area crewers will play, and the motion is to add the Valley Country Club to that list at a cost of fifteen hundred dollars a season. That's the motion.
Just on the question, I, I think what Mr. Barletta brought up at, at the committee meetings was that the coach was asking to move, to change from Valley to, from Sugarloaf to Valley. Am I, am I correct? That the coach had requested a move from Sugarloaf Golf Course to Valley, and during the discussion, it was decided that if a change was going to take place, a price should be obtained from everybody. So what's changing now is we're going to keep it, keep Sugarloaf, but add Valley on top of it.
The reason for clarification at the committee meeting last Thursday, that was the request from the coach. Since that time, verbally, I've been given another recommendation by the coach.
Mr. Barletta, he's not looking to displace Sugarloaf. He's looking just to add the country club. Am I correct?
Verbally, that's what I was.
That's the understanding I'm under.
Mr. Barletta, this is a fall sport, correct? When would preseason for a fall sport start? Now?
Generally, the fall sports in the months of June, July do some preseason open course, in this case, open gym for this.
All right, that answers my question.
Mr. Benomo, I don't disagree with you too often, but I have to tonight, for the simple reason, we just stopped paying teachers for the academy across the street. We eliminated German for approximately, I'm going to say a hundred, a hundred and fifty kids, and you're saying this involves twenty-five kids for golf? I think our priori is a little screwed up here. I could be wrong, Tony, because I don't golf.
No, I know.
I can't see chasing, hitting a ball, chasing, and hitting it again. But I, I just can't see the situation we're in, and we're taking it away from educational points and giving it to golf.
But I think it comes down to like four hundred dollars.
It, it does, because there's, am I correct in stating there's eleven hundred dollars left in the, in the golf budget?
Well, it's here.
For this past year? I didn't check the golf budget. According to the coach, that, that's what he had said to me, that there's, there's that much, so realistically, talking about four hundred dollars. And if, and if you don't use the eleven hundred, what does that go back into the general fund?
Mr. Benomo, I'm not sure if you're aware, but would they be only practicing at both courses and the matches would still continue to be at?
I don't know, I don't know what the inner workings are, but I believe they could probably, I, I think he had said that there, there may be a JV, I know, because he has JV, a JV team, and he also has, I think he told me five or six girls that have signed up. So, I mean, it's something that we, we've never had. I know when I played golf back in high school, it was, we, we may have had fifteen kids playing on that team, but since then, it seems like it's gone awry. We put a new coach in, he's got different ideas, so again, I'm supporting his wishes as far as it goes. And again, the cost of four hundred dollars, if, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, you would know, you would know what's in the budget for this, this existing. Hmm?
Again, I didn't, I didn't check, but I will check.
Yeah, I can't, I can't say it for myself, I'm just going on what he's telling me.
I, I would like to know what Mr. Barletta's recommendation is, but I don't want to, and I'm not asking, because I don't want to put you on the spot, but, but that's the direction it should have come from, if I'm not mistaken. It should have come from, that's what we've been fighting for, to keep administrators, administrators and all, but.
Okay.
Mr. Barletta, if I may, I should have directed my, my question to you. Do you know where the matches will be still held, or with that, I, I, I mean, if we need extra space, but do you know where the matches?
No, I don't know what is, what the coach's wishes, but I can only tell you, we cannot alter any, we have to pick a whole site for the Wyoming Valley Conference. As of now, our declaration is Sugarloaf. If that's to be changed, I have to get that in writing and submit it in writing to the league. But you can't, if you're going to go multiple courses, you can't say this week we're playing here, next week there.
So you can't, the league does not allow you to have the varsity play at Sugarloaf and a girls' or JV team to play at the country club? That is an out.
It doesn't care if JVs are, there is no JV league. You could do whatever you want with that. There's no league, it's only your varsity is in the league. There's no Wyoming Valley Conference girls, girls, again. So, we must, as a school district, as an athletic director, designate our home course. It's no different than any other sport. You can't get multiple facilities.
So through the course of the week, if he wants to hold practices, it isn't like we have to practice that.
That's different, so.
Yeah, it's completely different. Okay, yep.
And not to belabor this, because again, in theory, I don't have an issue with it. I'm just.
No, you wouldn't.
Trying to figure out, though, and again, I'm not sure, because I guess as a basketball team, you could practice anywhere and be prepared for the game, but if I'm a golfer and that's my home course, and that's where our match is going to take place, would it not be prudent to probably practice on that course? Or doesn't it matter? Again, I don't know this answer.
It does matter, because even though I wasn't a very good golfer, I did play years ago, and depending on what greens you're putting on in particular, some are faster than others, and the course itself, the layout of the course is even different. So that would make a difference, I would think, not being an expert, but a novice.
Any other questions or concerns?
Are we still in public comment with this?
Sure.
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 On the proposal?
Yes.
And also, we are talking about saving money, right? Make sure, on, on your next meeting, make sure you put on the agenda what I told you today, what I was asking you today, to save that three thousand dollars. The district needs money. The district cannot afford to waste money, and we have to be fair, and we have to do justice to the students. The students are first. Students are first. Take a look at, at the, the Spanish program. Isn't mandated, is it federally mandated that the students learn Spanish?
Antonio, the?
I'm talking about saving money. Talking about saving money, because the district is in dire need.
This proposal specifically on the golf course, so unless there's, I, I understand where you're coming from.
Everything is about money, and I am going to keep speaking, because I, I, I want to save the district money.
I agree.
I want to save the district money.
I agree. Thank you.
And we need to be fair. You know, you eliminated German, there are going to be complaints. There are going to be complaints. You, you got more than fifty percent of the district as Spanish speakers. That's, don't open up a can of worms. Try to save money, please, but the students come first. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reba, roll call.
On the new motion, Mr. Benomo?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
I wish we had done this the right way, just like I think Mr. Zola said, and it waited till committee meetings and then voting on it next
I wish we had done this the right way, just like I think Mr. Zola said, and it waited till committee meetings and then voting on it next month. Because I'm not against this, really not. But because we're voting on it this month, then rather than drag it on for another month now that it's out in the open, my vote is yes. But I would have rather waited.
Mr. Fum.
Yes.
Mrs. Kay.
Yes.
Mr. John.
No.
Mr. Mahalik.
No.
Mrs. Scarsella.
Yes.
Mr. Zola.
No.
Mr. O'Donnell.
No.
Motion passes.
Facilities and capital projects, prove items 35 through 39 with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers 35 through 39, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, aye, a motion passes.
Finance approve items 40 through 52 with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Reba, on number 40, does that include increase in taxes?
This does have the same tax rates in that was in the preliminary budget. So for Schuylkill County, I believe they're the same, Luzerne and Carbon are going up.
Did we find out the total assessed value yet for our district?
We, as I said, we have the latest that we have is from January. We're still hoping to get later assessed values. We did do some initial calculations on the homestead, as you asked. This year the homestead is approximately 385. And it appears, at least initially, that it's going to 388, so about $3 more per homestead.
Let me ask you this question then, and I think I asked you the other night in executive session. Is it possible, right now I believe there are 1,800 and some people who don't pay any school property taxes because of the homestead? With the taxes going up, is it possible some people who are not paying school district taxes now may be paying them next year?
If they are not paying them now because of the homestead, with it going up, and I know it's only $3, it probably will capture a few more, so there may be a few additional people not paying. But because the homestead's not going down, the same people at least would be getting their school taxes satisfied.
But the property taxes are going up?
Yes.
And they're going to go up more than $3, correct?
Yes.
So I'm going to ask the same question again.
Yes, I'm sorry, I understand your question. So, yes, there would be less people getting their...
Homestead, or free.
Their full property taxes paid.
Thank you.
So, again, besides taking things from the kids, we always go back to the homeowners. And the average person living in this area has a median income of $30,000 and they struggle to put food on their table. And I just cannot vote to raise anyone's taxes until we look for ways to cut spending in the district.
So, Mr. Reba, this is a proposed preliminary budget, but it could still be amended by June meeting, for the June meeting?
Yes.
Right, okay.
I'm going to state one more time, like I've said in the past, nobody here wants to raise taxes. But once again, we're talking about property taxes and pension reform and so on. That comes from the state level, does not come from our level. So until the state comes through, and I doubt whether they're going to do that anytime soon, with some kind of reform in those two areas in particular, every school board in the state of Pennsylvania has their hands tied when it comes to stuff like this. What are we supposed to do? Meet for six months and don't do anything? I don't think so. Something has to be done again, once again this year. And if you're sitting where I'm sitting in these meetings, which some people are there and some people aren't, but if you're sitting in those meetings, you know that we struggle trying to decide what to do and what not to do. Nobody wants to hurt the students, ever. At least of all. But you have to do something. And if anybody could come up with a better idea, if we were to say no to cutting German in one and two tonight, we'd be looking at another area. And then somebody could come in and talk to us about that. And then we wouldn't do that, we'd have to come look at another area. So where does that stop? Just like with kindergarten last year, nobody wanted to make it half a day. But it was something we decided as nine board members at the time that we had to try. I don't think it worked, so I voted to reinstate full day kindergarten this year. But if you think we just sit there with our heads in the sand, or anything else for that matter, and we don't care about what happens, you're all sadly mistaken. Thank you.
The bottom line comes down to, it's a big school district. Our numbers are increasing, the demands increase, the needs, the supplies, the personnel, none of it stops. Antonio, none of it. It always increases and goes up and goes up. If we don't manufacture anything that we could sell to sell more of something in order to raise our revenue, in order to continue running our plant, that's what plants do. If they make plastic cups, they have to sell enough plastic cups to make profit in order to keep their plant running and make money. We don't have that, our base is taxes. I said on every budget meeting this year, last year, and a few in the year before that. And what it comes down to is, we have responsibilities to the students. We do have responsibility to the students. And in order to do that, you need money to run a school. And it looks like, every time you see something here, it looks like, oh, they're spending $3,000 here or they're authorizing another $5,000 here or a position. They're necessary, they're required. The last year and a half, we cut spending dramatically in every aspect. Every aspect of the district, we cut spending. You can only cut so far before you start to hurt where you don't, we can't even fill positions because of not raising salaries and not offering proper benefits and that. So I'm not going to give a speech, I think Jimmy hit it all on the nose. Come to the meetings, see what it is, everything's made public before you comment. And please, don't, coming from the board, don't say that we're hurting kids or we're not looking out for the kids. That's irresponsible.
Mr. Chapman, I thank you for your dedication, devotion, commitment to the budget process. You have all spearheaded it, I could see and hear the pain. And I do think it's unfair if we dangle the kids in front of people and say we're purposely are, we're not looking, that's just unfair. Probably politics, but I think what it comes down to is, school districts have one way to generate revenue. One way, one way. And that's to raise taxes. Our allocation that is delivered by the state to us does not cover our basic expenses. No one wants to raise taxes, me of all people. No one wants to cut kindergarten, I look at these two young men, no one wants to cut German. No one wants to raise class sizes to 30, 31, 28. But please, anyone, come up here, I've been here now eight years, so grateful for the opportunity for four more. But if someone could come up here and tell us how we can do it without cutting something, please do it. Just give us what it is. I mean, we are bareboned in administration. We have one superintendent and one director of curriculum, one director of special education. That's basically our entire central office. I know districts with less than 2,000 kids that have more in their central office. We've cut security, we've cut security. We've cut every area, transportation, trying to not affect kids. I don't know what else to do, but I'm not going to dangle kids out there and play that. I'm not doing that, that's not fair. Because the reality is, we are trying to survive and we are trying to maintain the honors courses that we have. We're trying to maintain the humanities program, you know, cutting the curriculum writing. We've been curriculum writing for 30 years. It's the most important part of being a teacher is your curriculum. We cut it, we're going to try to prioritize it, maybe that can happen, I don't know that it can. We have, you know, this wonderful career program right here that we're in here. Walk through this building, this is amazing, going to hire a masonry teacher tonight. Not cutting masonry, that's such an important, important career and profession. High demand, Mr. John tells us, and it is. That few school districts have this opportunity. You look at the STEM program, it is still one of the most cutting edge programs in the entire state. I look at our facilities, if there's better facilities, the state of Pennsylvania, top to bottom, please, show me the district that has them. Beautiful, I'm proud of what we've done, but I'm not dangling kids out there. I'm sorry if we have to cut into something, but we are trying to maintain as many programs for as many of our students. And that's, but Mr. Chappy, thank you so very much for what you've done.
Mr. O'Donnell, I have a question on number 50.
Sure.
So the four day work week that some of the bargaining units will be going to for the summer, what will the hours be and how will you make sure that they're there for those hours?
Mr. Reba, do you know the hours?
The hours, Jesse, there was two sets. The times, yes. And everyone would be required to clock in using the time clock system.
And Ms. Kay, that's everyone, every single employee.
And again, just so that everyone's aware of it though, Marie, hold on one second. This was already discussed at two different committee meetings where other board members have already asked those exact questions and made sure that everyone was going to check in, punch in, so that there was a record on the time clock, in and out. There was a schedule designed for if you take a half a day, if you take a half a day in the morning, if you take a half a day. All that information was put out and it's also out to the public. So, again...
Okay, well, I'm just asking again for my own reference.
Well, I know that.
So, I'm sorry, how many hours a day? So 32 and a quarter hours per week. 33 and a quarter hours for the same pay though, correct?
Yes. 33 hours even.
Mr. Reba, we did share with directors the potential savings for this schedule.
What's the savings?
Between 50 and 60,000.
That's what we were told last year also, but...
We had a five day summer week last year.
Right, because we didn't go along with it last year, I understand that. But the way to get money without having to cut things is to run the district more like a business. And I understand wanting to do this, I understand people wanting to work less in the summer. But businesses don't do this and they have gone now to zero based budgeting and that's how you save money. This is a business like anything else, except we have a commodity that's unlike anything else because we educate kids who go out in the world and give back. So I do understand budgeting, I do understand accounting, I do work in a benefits department for one of the biggest companies in the country. And I do know what we do to cut back and I do know we don't replace everyone who leaves and we cross train everyone to make sure that everyone can fill in. And maybe it's about time we started looking at that with this district, that we go to running it like a business.
You vote, Marie, you want to run it like a business, but then off the floor comes a motion on the golf thing and you vote yes on it without hesitation, but you want to run it like a business. And I can't imagine in your business, in the boardroom, if someone just popped out, changing everything without following any of the procedures. We're not going to worry about the committee meetings, we're not going to worry about the administrator in charge of that, we're not going to worry about anything, but that was okay. But now...
It was $400.
But now, wait, but now you've missed every meeting that we've had, every committee meeting, every budget meeting. You haven't attended anything in the last three months where we discussed this in length and in detail. But now, tonight, you're going to do it on TV, you're going to do it in front of all the public.
It's my priority to ask questions, Mr. Zola.
Get real.
And I do, I appreciate everybody has the opportunity to ask questions. And I'm not really a budget expert. I've tried to participate, but I, since we're all here together and this is our time, let's, I'll turn this to a committee meeting for a moment. What is, Ms. Kay, what is zero based budgeting? What should we do? Because we need, we need answers. And if we've got a board member here right now that can give us those answers, let's do it. Let's hear it, let's do it now. If we have to stop this meeting for a couple minutes so we could, what is zero based budgeting? Why aren't we doing that?
I will be happy to bring in information on zero based budgeting.
Well, let's do it now, because it's here now and I don't know that we'll get...
Ms. Kay, where was zero based budgeting six months ago, seven months ago, eight months ago, nine months ago? Where was this information? We've had budget meetings and Mr. Chapman has chaired for the past six months. Where is zero based budgeting?
I've been saying we need to cut back on things. We need to look at, we need to do some kind of a study to see which positions are not needed. We're heavy on one side and not heavy on the other side. That's unfortunate. When people...
Well, tell me where you want to cut, where do you want to cut? Right now, tell everybody where you want to cut.
Here's something on, that wasn't discussed because it's not on previous agenda, emailed out, 523. We're creating a warehouse coordinator position, what is to pay for that? Didn't we just do away with that?
First of all, it was discussed at that meeting. The meetings you weren't at, Marie, it was discussed. So, again, you're wrong, it was discussed.
I'm reading it right off of here.
We discussed it last night at the budget meeting again, in depth. And there's a lot of excellent reasons for having a warehouse administrator. Because, again, you're obviously not aware of what's going on. Purchasing from four or five different companies, all at different prices. Are you aware of that? Are you aware that that's been taking place? Are you aware that we've been buying garbage bags at one company for one price, garbage bags from another company at another price? You're not aware of that because, I don't, I'm not sure why. We all are, because we were at the meeting last night when this was all discussed. There's a considerable amount of savings in that position if that person has the authority to make sure that every purchase that comes through is a legitimate authorized purchase. And you can't keep dumping it on Bobby Krasinski or Tony Reeve or somebody else to do that. Everyone's dish is so full in this district now. So, there is a legitimate reason for that position, an excellent reason. And if you would have attended the meetings, you would know why.
Mr. President, excuse me, Mr. Mahalik, just want to remind the board that approximately two weeks ago or so with regard to Ms. Kay's comment, I did send out a detailed cross training chart for every department. I asked our department leaders to submit that to me and we are in full gear. And the department heads and supervisors are in charge of that, thank you.
I mean, we cut last year teachers and employees, probably, I don't know, 30, 40 employees last year? A minimum of 30 or 40 employees. You're sitting there saying we should be cutting, we should be cutting positions. We cut 30, 30 some jobs last year, 40 jobs last year. How much, how much can you cut? I mean, we've looked at it, we've looked at all the positions, at the meetings you weren't at, Marie. Be fair about it at least.
We have a motion and a second on the table for finance.
If I may just finish, because I, and I can't be critical of someone that can't attend meetings because we all have very, very busy lives and I know that, so I'm not critical. But it is important, I think, for board members to be able to speak. And again, I think Ms. Kay brings a lot to the table. Where, Ms. Kay, could we, because I know you said one side's lopsided. What, where can we cut? Because I want to hear it, I think it's important, maybe there is something we missed. And I will tell you, I'm not an expert on this, on this area, in this field. So where could we cut something? Because I think that's important. You said we're lopsided, so maybe it is, and let's do it.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Reba, roll call.
On numbers 40 to 52, I'll call each person if you would just tell me your, any no votes. Mr. Benomo.
I know on 50.
Mr. Chapman.
Yes on everything.
Mr. Fum.
Yes.
Mrs. Kay.
No on fifty, and no on fifty-three.
Mr. John.
No on forty and no on fifty.
Mr. Mahalik.
Yes on everything.
Mr. Reba, I think Ms. Kay said fifty-three. This vote is only for fifty-two.
Yeah, it is. Yes, I'm sorry.
Fifty-three would be a separate vote, yes.
Yes. Mr. Mahalik. Yes on all?
Yes on all.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Scarsella.
I don't know what I'm voting on. What am I voting on?
Numbers forty to fifty-two.
Forty to fifty-two. No on fifty.
Mr. Zola.
Yes on everything.
And Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
I think the motion passes, number fifty passes five to four.
Number fifty-three bills.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Number fifty-three, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No on C.
And I'm a no.
Any other no votes? Motion passes.
Superintendent's agenda, approve items fifty-four through...
Second.
Questions or comments on the agenda items? Mr. Reba?
Numbers fifty-four through sixty-eight, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Approve items sixty-nine through eighty-one with one motion.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments?
Mr. O'Donnell, may I just comment on seventy-two and seventy-three? I've been an educator for thirty-nine years, and decisions like this, recommendations to the board of directors like this, certainly a stab in my heart. According to the numbers that I was given by the high school administration, we have ninety-seven students in two, three, and four. German, two, three, and four. We're required by the state to offer two rural languages for a four-year sequence. We do have Spanish and French, and we have large numbers in Spanish and French. I appreciate our German faculty, I appreciate the students who are taking it. And as Mr. Zola said, we are challenged as administrators to come forward with the recommendations. If we don't recommend anything, we're looking at a three or four, five million dollar deficit. So, I just would like the audience and the directors to understand that I'm not proud of recommending something like this. I'd like to think of myself as a student advocate, and have been for thirty-nine years. That being said, decisions need to be made, and we cannot continue with business as usual.
One question, Doc, that was mentioned by one of the students. With the ones that are currently in German one or German two, are they going to be accommodated for in any way, shape, or form or not?
Mr. Chapman, because we have a teacher in the department who's duly certified Spanish and German, I think we can accommodate the students through the second year of the language. And that would be, I think, an appropriate time, if it so pleases the board, to reduce down to the two languages.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, may I just ask our instructor a question? And I really appreciate your abilities. Can this be done online? Because I know there's a lot of languages online now.
It's not done online.
Yeah.
It was offered online at this time through Cyberschool, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it can't. It's not as effective as it can be.
Okay.
There are ways that, you know, you can listen and you can do listen and repeat, so they're there. But we did the Sky thing a few years ago, and it was a disaster. It was an absolute disaster. So, it... I'm just very sad because they love it, and I love teaching it, and I'm just very sad.
What else do you teach at FMAAS?
Oh, the elementary.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I just...
No, that's okay. I'm pretty much short of English certification, and I thought about doing the tracks, I haven't done it, but we'll stay.
That's what you said. Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Reba, roll call.
So, numbers sixty-nine through eighty-one, and we're excluding seventy-four and seventy-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No on seventy-two and seventy-three.
No on seventy-two and seventy-three.
No on seventy-two and seventy-three.
No on seventy-two.
No on seventy-two and seventy-three.
No on seventy-two.
Just so I'm straight, Mr. Benomo is a no on seventy-two only. Mr. Chapman, any nos?
I don't know what just happened, but no. I mean, no, I'm silly yes, I'm silly yes.
Mr. Fume, your no votes were just like seventy-two. Mrs. Kay, seventy-two, seventy-three?
Yes.
Mr. John, seventy-two, seventy-three?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalik, seventy-two, seventy-three?
Yes.
Mrs. Scarsella, seventy-two?
Both.
And seventy-three? Mr. Zola, any no votes?
No.
And Mr. O'Donnell?
No.
I believe seventy-two did not pass, seventy-three did pass. Five, five, four vote.
And if I may reach to our administration, I truly appreciate what you're doing, and I'm certainly not trying to set you up here, okay? I appreciate this. I know we've got to make cuts. I know it. I just... I do... I think like every board member, I struggle so hard when I see... And I don't know what we're going to do, and we may have to revisit this next month. I just know I struggle really, really hard when we eliminate things like this, and as you do, Doc. And you're doing what you have to do. That's... You're making tough decisions, that's what the leader has to do. And I sit here as a board member. You know, and I put my education piece aside, and I just... It's very hard for me to do this, so... But yet, I know we've got to make cuts. Or raise taxes, so...
And I want to be sure the directors know that we're being challenged as leaders, but ultimately, I respect your decision, and I think we're all trying to do the best job we can, given the challenges in front of us. Thank you, Ms. Mahalik. Okay, approving items eighty-two through eighty-six with one motion.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers eighty-two through eighty-six, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Number eighty-seven, recommend board approve the creation of a warehouse coordinator position on class.
So moved. Second.
Doc, if I can, just so there's no dispute with the association, is it possible to make an amendment to change that to supervisor instead of coordinator?
Is that okay in that union, Tom?
I'll make that motion.
They do not have supervisors in their union.
I'll make the motion.
So, we need a motion and a second for the amendment.
I did. I made the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all right.
Any questions or comments on eighty-seven?
What is the pay for this position?
The job description and the pay was not established yet. I believe it would be established next month in June.
Mr. Reba, roll call.
So, we're voting on the amendment to change coordinator to supervisor. Mr. Benomo?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Fume?
Yes.
Mrs. Kay?
No.
Mr. John?
Sure.
Mr. Mahalik?
Yes.
Mrs. Scarsella?
No.
Mr. Zola?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
The amendment passes, so on the amended motion, which would be warehouse supervisor. Mr. Benomo?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Fume?
Yes.
Mrs. Kay?
No.
Mr. John?
No.
Mr. Mahalik?
Yes.
Mrs. Scarsella?
No.
Mr. Zola?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number eighty-eight, recommend board approve the creation of an additional attendance officer position.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Number eighty-eight, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. I'm a no, too.
Any other no votes besides Mrs. Kay and Mrs. Scarsella? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Mr. O'Donnell, if we may just pay special gratitude to our retirees this evening, again, wishing them all the wonderful health and good times that we hope they enjoy for many, many years, and thank them for their service to our district and to our students.
And I don't think we have any new appointees here this evening, but we do certainly want to recognize them and welcome them to our district as well.
We're going to open the floor for public comment that were on agenda item... Or items that were not on the agenda this evening.
I have a question for Mr. Reba.
Yes, sir.
What's... My name is Antonio. Antonio Rodriguez from Hazleton. Mr. Reba, I have a question for you. How much money is one mil?
It varies per county because of the...
Luzerne County.
Luzerne County, you actually have to look at a combined blended rate because we're in three counties, but I don't have the exact number, but it's somewhere around three million is the blended rate per mil.
How many mils is five dollars?
I'm sorry, what?
Five dollars. If you raise my taxes, based on what I own, based on my house, okay? You raise my tax. My house is... My house is worth one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. It's in the highs.
And one mil?
You've raised my taxes five dollars. I can afford it.
One mil would be a hundred and fifty-seven dollars, Antonio.
One mil... It's a hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
What percent of your assessed value?
So, one mil is a hundred and fifty dollars for one year.
Correct.
If that's your assessed value.
It's point zero zero one is one mil on a thousand-dollar assessment.
If you raise my taxes ten dollars, let's say I give you ten more dollars on top of what I'm giving you now.
Yes.
I think I can afford it.
Antonio, it doesn't work that way, though. The way it would work, if we raised taxes to the index this year, Luzerne County gets hit first, carbon goes up a little...
Why should Luzerne County get money out of your raising taxes?
No, I'm just... Let me just explain the way it works. If you were to raise taxes this year to... One of the options, that's a possibility, it would be Luzerne County that would hit the index first. We have three counties, so all three of them don't hit the index. The first one to hit this year would be Luzerne, and based on a one-hundred-thousand-dollar home, and then you could go up to two-hundred thousand, down to fifty thousand, whatever, but based on a one-hundred-thousand-dollar home, you'd be paying approximately thirty-eight dollars more a year.
Thirty-eight dollars more a year?
On a one-hundred-thousand-dollar home. Am I right on that?
You are. It changes every year, so this year, the way Skookle is, actually, the tax rates and the budget, they do not get a raise.
They wouldn't get hit.
Well, for my house, that would be about fifty dollars a year.
It's different for each county.
Between fifty and sixty, yes.
What I'm saying to the public here is, please don't be afraid of paying a little bit more on taxes. This is for the children, especially for the small children. We just approved the little children for kindergarten. Let's be compassionate. Let's be compassionate with these kids. You know, I don't drink beer. I can spend twenty dollars on Saturday night getting drunk. I don't do that. The twenty dollars that I'm going to spend getting drunk on Saturday night, I'd rather give it to the kids. Give it to the children. Let's be compassionate. Let's help the children, help the school district. The only source of income the school district has is taxes. Well, don't be afraid of paying taxes as long as you can afford it. As long as you can afford it.
So, Antonio, if I may, I think what's even more important for our residents to do is to make phone calls, email, write letters to our legislators because it is not fair that this is the way we continue to fund education. This is not fair. You put new windows on your house, you shouldn't have to worry about your taxes going up. It's unfair, and true, fifty dollars is not a lot for many of us, but for some, it really could be devastating because I guarantee you, your electrical bills are going up, and all your utility bills are going up, and your medication that most of our seniors need to survive, to live and live pain-free, will go up this year.
So, while you're saying this...
We need to fund public education differently, not through property taxes.
Or else we'll need to vote some state legislators out of office in November.
These nine volunteer positions, unpaid volunteer...
No, I'm not talking about you. I'm... I said state legislators.
These nine unpaid volunteer positions can do nothing else but raise taxes to keep German and to keep kindergarten and to keep transportation and to keep free and reduced lunches coming to our kids.
That's what I just said.
But the people that get paid, the people that can look around the country and say, wow, we are one of the last states doing it this way, aren't doing it. They're not making the tough decisions. They're not telling senior citizens, maybe you got to cut back on medicine this year. That's where it's unfair. And that's what we got to do. That's what we have to do.
I just... That's what I'm saying, but I just said, if you can afford it.
Right, but the problem is a lot...
If you can afford, don't be afraid of paying taxes.
And Antonio, I'm so happy...
We have a lot of people that have a lot of money.
But we have a lot of people that are... But we have a lot of people that are struggling.
These people you see out there, some of them are school teachers.
But this is not the majority of our people.
And we are people...
The majority of our people are economically disadvantaged. They're hurting. They're struggling.
And we read the Bible. We go to church on Sunday, and we read the Bible and all that. We don't want to be hypocrites. We don't want to be hypocrites. We need to be compassionate. I am compassionate of the elderly people. The low-income elderly who are about to lose their houses.
Right.
I'm compassionate.
That's...
I'm compassionate with them, too.
That's right.
School taxes on property are key. I mean, it goes back to when wealthy landowners owned all the properties, and they were taxed to keep schools.
And they pay minimum wage, and they have illegal aliens working for them, too, for less than minimum wage.
And that's what we're saying.
We have illegal aliens working for rich people. For rich people who don't want to pay you. They hire them for less than minimum wage, and they don't even help them get citizenship.
Antonio.
Thank you.
You're right.
Antonio. Antonio, there is a bill on the floor now, House Bill seventy-six, that is putting a push to eliminate the property tax and raise the personal income tax from three-point-seven percent to four-point-nine percent, and also to increase the state sales tax from six to seven percent. So, that would help the homeowner.
How many of you will agree with that?
I would agree with that.
What she just said, huh? How many of you will agree with that, Bill?
The problem is, a very similar bill has been on the floor now for about eight years, okay? They continue... There are legislators that recognize, but we're talking eight... I've... There's been different versions of that bill. It doesn't ever get off the floor. That's the problem.
And Antonio, like Mr. Mahalik is stating, every single year, we sit up here like a firing squad, you know, that we have to raise taxes, that the Hazleton area school board is raising taxes, so we all look like fools while our state legislators wave and smile and say, hey, you know, we're doing everything we can for the school district. They're not. Fact of the matter is, they're not. Our state legislators are failing us miserably.
That's true. And it's very sad. It's very sad.
It is.
And we still have to go after the freeloaders. We need to go after freeloaders. You see yesterday's newspaper, people buying steaks and lobster on a green card. What do you call that card? Access card?
I appreciate your comment.
Welfare fraud. There's a lot of welfare fraud.
Thank you.
There's a lot of waste.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Antonio.
So, we just voted on a position that we don't have a job description for, that we don't have any pay for. don't have any pay for, but we know it's not going to be a union position because we just want to change the title to it.
I don't think that's the case. What we had for the coordinator position is now going to be different than the supervisor position. So, no, I don't think anyone was prepared tonight to make that a supervisor position.
Then why did we?
But I heard numbers for the coordinator position at our meeting. I heard the salary was going to be at that. So, I'm not...
Then why did we change it? Because we wanted to make it a non-classified position so we could make the salary whatever we wanted to make it? Because that's basically what you just did. And it still can go up for unit clarification and cost legal fees for the district, which is ridiculous. Instead of just like having an open discussion with us, I meet with them all the time about everything. But all of a sudden, I come into a meeting and this is thrown at us, you know, it's really not fair and it's not right and I don't think you should be voting on something you don't have a job description and an amount of money for. I mean, that's what you just did. You just voted on something that you have no cost for. And I understand what you're saying, we need somebody to be in charge. You said, you know, they're buying garbage bags here at one price and there at another price. I don't think we have to have that as a non-classified position. And I think the warehouse people will do a phenomenal job right now. Maybe we just need somebody to oversee that without hiring somebody for big bucks. We're saying we have to cut. We have to make cuts, we have to make cuts, but we want to add another position that we have no idea how much it's going to cost us.
Talk to Mr. Reba tomorrow.
And Terry, keep in mind that, no, this didn't, this didn't increase anything, that we just created the position tonight. We didn't hire anybody, we're just approving the creation of the position.
I understand that, but why are we doing it as, why is it so important that it's a non-classified position?
Because if it wasn't a non-classified, they wouldn't be able to supervise the other[1705.25]